... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the May 13th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And Robert, nope, Ken in the front row would have listening devices for you if you need them.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Nobody's going to approve them?
Well, you were so.
Aye. So. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of May 6, 2014.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $238,048.49.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second on the bills. Any comments? Comment from Commissioner Barth?
Well, I'm just glad to see them under $300,000 this month, but, or this week. It would also say that includes a bill for $4,400 to record keepers for storage of court records.
Have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. A, the juvenile detention center's statistic report for April 2014, and B, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for April 2014. They've been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Take a motion for the approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second to reprove the routine actions. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Item six is application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helseth, Director of Equalization. We have before you quite a number of applications for abatement dealing with the city of Sioux Falls. And these are for record IDs 80995, 46118, 54773, 54774, 55707, and 84315 in the amount of $4,272.72.
Is there a motion on the city of Sioux Falls' abatements?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions for Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is also for the city of Sioux Falls for record ID numbers 58525, 62587, 70860, 71577, 79707, and 81173, in the total amount of $1,121.98.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions for Kyle? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
The third again is for the city of Sioux Falls for record ID numbers 83285, 83287, and 83288 in the amount of $1,162.56.
Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
The fourth for the city of Sioux Falls is for record ID numbers 11596, 11592, and 80786 in the amount of $2,652.96.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kyle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have four assessment freezes. The first one is for record ID 71799, and it's for $320.96. Record ID 49048 for $1,022.23. Record ID 40705 for $305.67, and record ID, I forgot one. Record ID 40349 is for $1,001.73. Record ID 40705 was for $305.67, and record ID 49048 was for $1,022. And record ID 71799 was for $320.96.
Move for approval for items E through H. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. We have one more.
The last and final one is for sonify solutions. This is also known as LodgeNet. This is for 2013 property taxes in the amount of $67,067.40 for recommended denial.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Kyle, didn't they come to us during our equalization hearings and we turned them down at that time?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So what's, what's the story now?
This was put into process about a month before the equalization hearings. So it was left up to sonify as to whether or not they wished to file for an abatement, and they went ahead with it anyhow.
Move to deny. Second.
Have a motion and a second to deny. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
I wonder if the state's attorney has any comments?
My only comment is this type of abatement for the reasons given about valuation of property by a third party, that's not contemplated as a valid reason for abatement under our statute. So denial, I believe, is the appropriate response.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
Item seven, notices and requests. A notice of East Dakota Water Development District Board of Directors meeting at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, May 15, 2014, at the EDWDD office, 132B Airport Avenue, Brookings, South Dakota, has been received. There are no planning and zoning notices. Item number nine is a petition for compromise of lien. Kirsten Katmeyer.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one compromise of lien application this morning. I'm kind of filling in for Commissioner Pecus when he's out, and I can brief you on this. Of course, there was a briefing memo that went out. This application is from a husband and wife couple who submitted this application requesting a compromise and release in full with no payment on two liens, the numbers given before. One of them is in the husband's name, the other in the wife's name. $574 in the husband's name, $752.43 in the wife's name. The reason for this application, according to the applicant, is the refinance of a home mortgage, and these liens were identified as part of that process. There's a single charge for public advocate office services in 2012 on the husband's DPNO, and that's in the amount that I just stated. And then that same amount is also assessed to the wife applicant for the same billing for the same services from the public advocate's office. There is an additional amount which accounts for the difference in amounts there for representation of the couple's juvenile son in 2009 juvenile court matter. That amounts to $178.43, and that's for court-appointed attorney services as well. In investigating this lien on the applicant's account, it appears that this might have been an error in assessing the amount to the applicant. They have an adult daughter who received representation from the public advocate's office, and it appears that the lien amounts on each of those numbers in the amount of $574 is associated with that representation, and under the law, an adult child is responsible for that. The remaining balance, the $178.43 on the wife's DPNO number, the applicant couple says that they paid that amount for the juvenile court representation of the son directly to the private attorney's office that provided those funds. We also have records that say, "We paid that amount to the private attorneys," hence the lien being assessed on that account. We did attempt to, or we did contact the attorney's office, who stated they have no record of that payment being made directly to them, and that's what they're saying to us. Now, as far as the applicant's financial situation, the wife states she is unemployed, and the husband states he's unable to work after recovering from a surgery. The reason that they want to refinance their house is to reduce the house payment and help their finances that way. They say they'll lose their opportunity to refinance if this is not acted upon today. According to their application, they have assets of approximately $32,000. That's primarily the value of some vehicles, and the home value is about $130,000. Liabilities are about $117,500. Those include the home mortgage currently on the home, and a car loan, and several credit card debts. If you have any further questions about the application, I'd be happy to go into more detail. But that's a summary of what's going on with this.
Commissioner Bertha?
Kirsten, on the $178.43 that they said they paid, and that the county says that they also paid, do they have a record of a receipt? Because obviously, the legal firm says that they did not get it, but...
Right. We don't have any receipt either from the attorney's office or from the applicants as part of this. I believe Robert Wilson with the commission office was the one who investigated this, and this was just stated over the phone.
Okay.
From the attorney's office. So that's all the information we do have.
The applicant is here.
Yes.
Perhaps he could answer that question as well.
Commissioner Barth?
Kirsten, part of this should have been billed to the older child, right?
Correct.
And how much was that?
That was the $574 amount, and that, remember, is double represented here, one on the husband's account number and one on the wife's account number. I believe that that's not an effective lien, and that should be assessed against the adult daughter, which you can do through resolution today.
So, pardon me, Madam Chair. What amount should we reassess to that other party?
$574.
$574.
Okay. I'll make a motion to put that $574.
I'm going to give the applicant an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Did the applicant want to speak? And you don't have to come forward, you can just be where you are and talk loud. If you want, go ahead.
Just in reference to the $178.43 that's remaining on there, between my wife and I both, we were awarded at the time that my older son was in the work to pay all of those debts within a window of time, and that was back in '09. My apologies for not hanging on to receipts long enough, but I promise you guys, I paid that. I did. I paid it. I did. I don't have any way to prove it. I wish I'd wrote a check, but I, in my honest opinion, I think I paid it by to resolve this. I'm going to save a bunch of money, get my payments down there where I can afford it, and I'll pay the $178.43 if that will resolve this and take care of it. Because they want to close on the 19th, and I'm not sure I'll even make it, but that's...
Commissioner Barth, did you want to finish your motion?
Well, I guess...
We have a question from, or a comment from Ken.
Well, and I've just looked at this, I'm sorry. Perhaps this will resolve, but as I look at this, and you, excuse me, I've just looked at this this morning since I've been back to work, but if you look at the DPNO number 69876, the original amount, and perhaps this is where some of the confusion would lie. The original amount for this juvenile was for $365. You will see that there was a payment recorded in '09 of $186.57. So there was, in fact, a payment made to us, and perhaps that is the amount that the applicant does remember. And that, however, and that, as you can see, that only covered part of the total bill of 365, and theirs was the balance of 178.43. So it appears that, yes, there was a payment made on the account, but there was not in full, and so that's where the balance is. And so it's highly likely that he made a payment directly to us, and that, but it did not satisfy the full amount of the bill, thus the balance of 178. And then when you added the $574, it just, of course, bumped that up to the 178 total as well.
Thanks, Ken. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth, did you want to make a motion?
Again, if the $574 indeed belongs to another person, I suggest we take it off the applicant, put it on that person, and that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to take the $574 and put it on the daughter, which has a DPNO number, which I don't have right in front of me, but I have a motion and a second...
I have it. It's 79372.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we have the $178.43 to deal with.
Madam Chair, I think that the applicant has enough problems going on in their life, and that forgiving this would be all right, so therefore I move to dismiss or relieve that $178 on the applicant.
Have a motion to dismiss the $178.43. Are there any seconds? Is there a second?
To remove the $178?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to remove the $178.43. Any other comments?
The only comment I have is, we have settled these for a percentage in the past. Obviously, we have a significant amount that's outstanding county-wide to the tune of, I think, what, $50 or $60 million?
$60 million.
But I'd like to know how much of the total he's paid toward that balance?
Just over 50 percent.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to dismiss the $178.43. Thank you.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when anybody that would like to speak to the public that is not on the agenda could come forward and identify themselves. Seeing none, we will move on.
Routine business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider drainage permit application 14-13 from Tom Opitz to conduct agricultural drainage on Track 1 Caleb Subdivision Northwest Quarter, Section 19 Township 101 North, Range 51 West, Wall Lake Township. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson from the County Planning Department. Just to recap for everyone in the audience on listening at home and for the county commission, this was an item that we had a public hearing on last week. We had some very good discussion about the drainage and the outflow of the, the outflow into, onto the neighbor's property downstream. And after you heard all of the testimony from both parties, it was your decision to continue this for one week to allow the neighbors to work together to see if they could resolve the whole drainage issue. And that being said, I know both parties are here, and I had a chance to talk to both of them, and I know that they have been in discussion to try to resolve this, so I don't know what the conclusion or what the results were, so you'll probably have to open, you know, ask the interested parties to come up and address this. But I'm here to answer any questions if you need refreshing on what the issues were from last week, and I'll just put up, I'll just put up the overall drainage map for you. Excuse me. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay. There will be just three of us voting on this. Commissioner Kelly's going to recuse himself. We did go through all of this information last week, so if there's any questions to update you, you can ask Scott at this time. Otherwise, we will move on and try not to repeat too much stuff. Any questions?
Just like to hear from the parties, if we could.
Okay. Can we have the proponent speak first? Did you have anything you want to say? That's you. Thank you. Do you want to give your address, too, Tom?
Yep. 46034, 265th Street, Hartford. Like you said, I visited last week with the other party. I contacted two people that do drainage work, told them that we need to work on this project and see what they can do. I guess they got in touch with them and worked that out. All I got to say is, if we look at that picture once more, you see the stuff in the white grate there?
Here?
Yep. That's a piece of the neighbor's farm, and the water that comes off that piece of land goes on to my piece of land. So I'm taking their water, and that needs to go down, keep going down the street. You know, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. The opponents, you want to speak, and just identify yourself again with the name and address, please?
My name's John Bowles. My address is 26405, 462nd Avenue, Hartford, South Dakota.
I'm Jason Johnson.
Okay. What did you come up with?
Well, we checked in a couple places that we know that do drainage and tiling, and a couple of them said, "If we want to tile down the road, we may have to put in a bigger main line now." And they would come out and give us an estimate, but right now, they're so busy, they didn't have the time within the last week to come give us an estimate, to let us know what the difference in cost would be, like, say, we happened to get in by with a six inch previously that maybe happened to have an eight inch now. They weren't able to come out and give us an estimate. But we did our end, called a couple places, checked it out, but after we left the building here last week, we never seen or heard from Tom.
And then we went and checked with another guy that's supposed to be doing his tiling, and whatever it cost us to just get, clean our ditch out and stuff, you know, and, well, I guess it's not too bad for price-wise.
Mm-hmm.
It all costs money, and we have to do this just because he's spending more water on us.
Commissioner Barth?
Jason, what do you think about the argument that it's taking your water off that piece to the northwest?
I don't own that ground, I just rent it. So I could farm it this year and never farm it again. It's always a one-year contract.
Sure.
So, I mean, yeah, it may help me out this year, but I may not farm it next year, so...
Right. Thanks.
You know, it's just a one-year deal always.
Any other comments?
I think that we have, at times, considered the responsibility of the downstream to clean out their, at least keep their ditches clean to keep water moving to where it needs to go. I know we've had this discussion in the past. I don't remember how we ended up coming out at the end, so...
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I know we've had situations where because the downstream was slow-moving, that people upstream of the tiling party were worried it would back up to them up in Logan Township. And it's tough when it's so complicated.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the drainage permit, 14-13, for Mr. Opitz to conduct his drainage.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the drainage. Any other comments or questions?
I would really hope that we would be able to have the community work to solve all the issues there.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to do the tiling. Get a backhoe and clean it out a little bit, try to make it go through. Hopefully, you'll reap some benefits from the cleaned-out ditch. Thank you.
Item 11 is a public hearing to consider drainage permit application 14-15 from Mark Klein to conduct agricultural drainage on the west half, southeast quarter, except more true Silver Creek addition of Section 22 Township 104 North, Range 49 West. David Heinold.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heinold, Planner 1, Minnehaha County Planning Department. Just excuse me one second while I bring up the PowerPoint. The Planning and Zoning Department received a drainage permit application from Mark Klein, Klein Land and Cattle, to conduct agricultural drainage on his property. The proposed drainage project is located in Section 22 and 23 of Del Rapids Township on the west half of the southeast quarter, and that's in Section 22, and also the east half of the southeast quarter in Section 22. And also included in there is the south half of the southwest quarter, Section 23 of Del Rapids Township. A notice of the May 13 public hearing was sent out on April 15, 2014, to the two downstream property owners, as indicated on the map, within one-half mile of the proposed outlet of the tile. On March 21, the Planning Department approved drainage permit 14-06 submitted by Mark Klein to install a drainage tile to increase agricultural production and reduce soil erosion, erosion potential of the property. The new tile would be installed in Section 22 and 23 of Del Rapids Township and flow directly into Silver Creek, the name stream. Since the proposed tile outlets into a name stream, the applicant was not required to obtain downstream permission. However, a drainage board hearing is required because of the appeal of an administrative decision submitted by the downstream property owner who lives at 47552, 248th Street, on March 25, 2014. The downstream property owner, Wayne Mortred, stated concerns over the amount of water to be drained and the potential effects of the drainage project on his property. As you can see here, the proposed tile, this shows the overview of all the proposed tile lines. I'll go through here just quickly and go through some of the pictures that I went, took, when I met with the applicant on the 5th. I conducted a site visit and determined that the proposed location for the drainage tile is in traditionally wet areas where water flows naturally. But as you can see, as we move forward here through, going through the flow of the project, And this is showing a view of one of the proposed tile lines from 248th Street, where, according to the Natural Resources Conservation Service, there is an existing ditch that they classified on the wetlands determinate, certified wetlands determination map, as shown in the green, the green dotted line that shows where that existing ditch is according to their records and what they went out and inspected earlier this year. However, three of the proposed tile lines, as you can see on this map right here, do not outlet into that name stream. Since three of those lines do not directly outlet into that name stream, tile cannot be placed in these areas without permission from all downstream property owners within one-half mile of the proposed outlet, or the end of the area where you see the two, the two tile lines that converge in the middle of that, middle of this area. So this would be one of the tile lines that would be placed that wouldn't connect with the name stream. And then right here would be about where the proposed outlet would be. So this would be another one of the lines. So this would be the eventual outlet of those three tile lines. So staff recommends that, finds that proposed tile lines will be placed in traditionally wet areas and should allow water to continue to flow into Silver Creek. So staff recommends that the Drainage Board approve drainage permit 14-06 with a condition that all proposed tile lines must outlet in, directly into Silver Creek name stream. And if you have any questions, I will feel free to answer them.
Questions for David? I do have one question, David. So we have this above-ground area that you've got highlighted in red, so that has been removed from the application, and you don't want to put the tile lines in that are, that come out on 248, that start at 248, those three lines there, that you want to remove? Those three lines?
Well, those three lines, since they do not outlet directly into the name stream, they would require downstream permission from the end of the outlet, from all property owners within a half-mile.
And we have not done that, so we...
They have not received that, so...
So we have to remove that, but we could, but we could approve the rest?
The applicant, the applicant is here, but he stated that in order for the project to work, he would eventually, if he wanted to, and he can clarify question, but basically, if he wanted to, he could outlet directly into the name stream, which is Silver Creek.
So, I have another question, I just have to remember what it was.
So, I have another question, I just have to remember what it was.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So, David, looking at this map, it appears that some of these tile runs go under the creek and then outlet on the other side. Is that what's happening? If you go just north of the northern outlet, there's a flow indicating it going from left to right across the creek, and then down to the... Is that in fact the plan?
Well, the applicant can clarify as far as the exact location, but what submitted to me as far as the tile map is, this is the location.
So I still need to understand exactly what you're asking us to approve or not approve before I talk to the applicant.
So what I'm recommending is a condition to be placed on the applicant, or on the approval of the application, that all tile lines must outlet directly into the name stream in order for it to be valid.
And those three lines that don't go in right now, you could come back with another permit after he has downstream approval to add those?
That'd have to be a separate permit.
Okay. Any other questions for David?
Can we hear from the applicant?
Yep, yep. As long as there's no more questions for David, we'll hear from the applicant. Yep, just come up here, you have to identify yourself and give your address, please.
Mark Klein, Del Rapids, 47238-247th Street. Them three tile lines that are in question there, you know, I went down to get the permit first, you know, I didn't exactly lay them exactly we thought, you know, we thought this is a blue line, should be a non-issue, permit should be good. Them lines, I guess what David is trying to say, will not be put in unless they can, unless the grade will allow us to go to the creek. If they cannot work going to the creek, they will not be put in.
Okay.
That, I think that's what you were asking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, 'cause I was not understanding if they don't dump directly in the creek, I mean, we're talking 25 feet away, I mean, but it's just a matter of taking them to the creek. So that's what we would do with them. So I guess the map's a little bit distorted, because if I'd have known that, I would have drawn the line in there, and we wouldn't have been having this discussion.
Okay.
So that answers the question on the tile.
Okay.
Anything else?
Commissioner Barth?
So, Mr. Klein, looking at the map there, the northern drain, the yellow dot there, it looks like water is coming from the northwest and crossing over, and then draining back to, on the east side. Is that how it's going to go?
I mean, you're crossing the blue line?
Yeah. And is that, that's not the creek that's...
The ditch is so silted in there, really, it's hard to even, I mean, when you're out there, I mean, you can see signs of the old ditch, but over the years, it's been filled in. And I don't know if the map that Dave gave me to draw this on even had the blue line on it.
Sure.
So I just drawing in the general area where we're going to tile, and it'll all work according to, you know, how the grade works, and, I mean, these are not exact locations. It's the area that's going to be fixed or tiled.
Is there any reason why we can't run those lines into the river, the creek, whatever?
You mean, across them?
Yeah, I mean, where it stops there, is there a reason why we can't run it into the blue line? I mean, that's what you want to do? So is there...
No, probably not.
Okay. All right.
It's just because I was drawing on my map, and we talked about, when we was out there doing a farm visit, we looked at that, and I said, and he said, "Well, you'll need downstream for these outlets." I said, "Well..." But if I take him another, whatever, 100 feet, 200 feet into the ditch, and he said, "Well, then you don't." I said, "Well, that's what I'll do."
Okay.
It's not, it wasn't that complicated.
Okay.
It's, according to the map, it's the way the rules read, but...
But they're going to be in there?
It just needed to be extended into the ditch.
Okay.
I guess I was in the idea of a blue line area is a blue line area more than just a ditch.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Klein? Commissioner Barth?
So, if that requirement for those three lines that currently terminate without going down to the, what you're calling the blue line, which is, by the way, the blue line is not really recognized in our ordinance as a named creek or whatever, in any case, if you are required to extend that 25 feet, you'll do it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and that's kind of how he's got it worded, if they approve, they have to outlet into the ditch or creek, or they cannot be installed.
Okay, that's my motion. I'll make a motion to permit this with the condition that those pipes terminate and over at the other drain outlet.
Commissioner Barth?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a minute.
I believe we have people here that want to talk...
Did you want a second, or do you want me to finish? You want me to... Yeah, we'll have the opponent listen to talk first. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. Your opponent, if you want to identify yourself and give your address, please.
Wayne and Kim Moretrude, 47552-248th Street, Del Rapids.
Could you speak into the mic a little clearer?
Wayne and Kim Moretrude, 47552-248th Street, Del Rapids.
Over.
Okay. First thing, my objection is regarding both permits 1406 and 1415, which is the ditch that needs to be put in place in order for this tiling project to even work and be effective. I had a pretty long conversation with Kirsten Katmeyer and forwarded all of my email correspondence with David Heinold to Kirsten to review. I don't know if you have that information in front of you...
I do.
...or not, if that was shared. I guess, just regarding, which this is the tiling permit, not the ditching permit, the 1406, it's my understanding, and I've got a letter from Mr. Heinold, an email letter, stating that the ditching permit is going to be denied, which it turns out he did not deny, because they are creating a new ditch and it is a non-invested type of project. Okay? It's my understanding that if it is a natural drainage way, which it's been told it is not, that it is not a ditched area, that the removal of the sediment, and I'm stating a part of the email, item number six, to Mr. Heinold, trying to clarify these things, that the removal of any sediment in there cannot exceed an original, the original depth of the capacity, or a depth of two feet, whichever is less, and that's the way the ordinance reads, even though I've been told very specifically that they need to ditch, and nothing has been mentioned regarding this tiling permit, and nobody is looking, and David has no pictures showing what is just below where this is all outletting into, which is a Silver Creek watershed dam, that through the years has completely silted in and has no capacity whatsoever to handle this water. In fact, after the last several years, the last two have been dried, but the three years prior, we had some very wet years, and that dam is all but completely silted in. So the only water holding capacity that's in there is basically a mucky, muddy mess that never drains away. There's no capacity for fresh water, so it's a, it's a big housing for, it's a mosquito breeding ground is what it's turned into. It's mud. I can't even, I'm trying to get in there and clear all the trees that have died because they've been flooded for the last handful of years, and I can't even get a piece of equipment in there. I've cut them down. I can't even get a piece of equipment in there to...
Check.
And that was a few weeks ago before we got into this rain. You can't even get into the property. But going back to where I was, you know, a depth of two feet, whichever is less, it's been stated very specifically that in order for this tiling project to work, it needs to, they need to get an elevation from the outlet of the Silver Creek watershed dam to three feet, so they need to run that ditch far enough up that valley, okay, to get to a depth where the ditch is three feet, the bottom of the ditch would be level with that outlet, in order for their tile to even work, because their tile has to come in down three feet. If that's the case, neither, the tiling permit is invalid, because it's not even possible for it to function properly. You know, we asked Mr. Heinold to come out and physically look at the property with us, which he did, and, you know, I'm going to try to be as kind as possible with the way he's performed his job, but he's said one thing and done another several times in several conversations, but he sat right there at kitchen table and looked at it and said, "Well, obviously, if they drain a constant flow of water into what you have going on here, it's going to have an adverse effect on you, because you have no way of handling that additional water flow. So it's just going to create more of a mess for us." We have attempted, you know, dating back three years ago, when Mr. Klein first contacted me about this project, and that's when they were apparently starting to plan, it's, you know, we'd like to tile all this ground, you know, what do we think, what do you think we have to do with the dam? Well, that indicated to me immediately that they agreed that something needs to be done to fix our situation. In the meantime, I've worked pretty diligently with the Silver Creek Watershed Board to try to get some help from them, and the original intent, my original intent and original comment from the very beginning, dating back to three years ago and ever since then, is, you know, if we can all cooperate on this deal and cost share this, you know, we can probably get this done. But I can't afford personally, you know, as the landowner of my little 10 acres, to put a $10,000 or $12,000 bill to dig this pond. You know, the argument tend to be made, well, the original dam isn't designed to hold water, okay, it's designed to fill up and drain out, which it will not do. I want it dug out so that if it's going to sit there and hold water, it can hold fresh water. And the outlet that goes outside of this dam where it leaves the property and actually goes into what the real Silver Creek is, cannot be changed. You know, if we could drop that down, it would change a lot, but it's not. This is a, this is a Corps of Engineers, it's a federal, you know, watershed program, and none of that can be changed. You know, I have since my objections to the permits for the reasons stated that I've tried to clarify as best I can with Mr. Heinold and Mr. Katmeyer, applied for a permit to go ahead and dig that, get that dam dug out so that we can handle this additional water flow, which I have obtained that permit.
You have or you have not?
I have obtained that permit to do so. But I've explained to Mr. Heinold and Mr. Klein that if I, and we did get the Silver Creek Watershed Board to agree to help pay for part of this project, unfortunately, you know, their board does not have the funding capability to put a lot into it, but they also agree that something needs to be done, so they have agreed to help pay $2,000 toward this project, which I'm very grateful for. Once we got that accomplished with the Watershed Board, and talking to Mark Klein, said, "Well, you know, if we can split the other half of this cost between the two of us, we can get this whole project done, we can get your ditch dug, you can get all your drain tile done, and it's going to benefit both of us." So that's been my intent, you know, from the very beginning. I believe the way it sits right now, I do have the permit to dig it out, but I'm not going to, and now that it's rained, I mean, you have to understand, it's very rare that this thing is completely dry, where you can actually get equipment in here. It was last fall, it was the fall before, but nobody seemed to want to do anything. And now I understand why, once I think that the applicants for the tiling and the ditching permit realize that they could maybe slip these permits through, because, you know, Mr. Heinold isn't necessarily following the letter of the ordinance when he's issuing these permits, and maybe it's due to lack of experience or understanding, or just, you know, wanting to keep people happy. I don't know what the reason is, but it's stated many reasons why the permit applications aren't even valid. You know, I believe that neither one of them projects should be allowed until, at minimum, until I can get enough time to get my ground straightened out in order to handle this constant water flow. You know, because right now, it's a very gradual grade, all the way from my ground, all the way up around the corner, you know, probably quarter mile or better where this ditch is going to have to go, and that water just sits in there. And if all that's going to get drained out of there into a pipe that's going to come right into our ground, which has no capacity to handle it, it's going to have a very adverse effect on our property. And I cannot afford to fund an entire project like this myself, right now, in order for them to go ahead and get their tiling worked up.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
So is your property right under, looking at the map there, right under the yellow arrow?
Scott, can you do the arrow so we can see what's going on?
Can you see the berm of the dam?
Yes, I can.
Yes, that's my property.
Right under the yellow arrow?
From there until, the white line pretty much shows it, where it comes up and around.
Yeah.
Okay.
Down to 248.
Yep, this follows our property line right here.
Sure.
So he wants to ditch here, you know, up through here, okay, and then run all of his tiles into that. Well, this area right here, and if you can see in this picture, there's a lot of trees down here.
Yep.
He's already removed all of his trees, because they've all died, because they've all been silted in and flooded and soaked in water for the last, you know, four or five years, and now I have since had to remove all of my trees, because they've all died. And, I mean, I've got, I've got pictures that I can show you of it flooded with even new trees since we built, which was 1006, that were planted in dry ground that have since silted in, and killed those trees. So, you know, the adverse effects it's having on us is it's just creating a heck of a mess. It's taken away all the habitat. I mean, the reason I bought out here in the first place is because there's this nice pretty dam with all these trees, and now it's all going away.
Yeah.
In turn, you know, I understand why they're doing what they're doing. It's a business, farming's a business, just like anything else. I sell real estate for a living. I know what the value of that property is and what happens if it just turns into more and more of a mess. So, you know, if it's having an adverse effect on the amount of acres that they can farm, it's also going to have an adverse effect on, you know, what the value of my property is if it's not fixed.
Where is the, so are these broken lines that are on here, is that the clean-out ditch?
Well, I hadn't seen that one before, honestly. My understanding is that the outlet sits right here, okay, to the dam, if you can see where I'm moving the...
Yep.
Okay. My understanding is that ditch has got to go up through here to some point to wherever it is where it's three feet below the outlet, or where the ditch is three feet deep, so their tile can run into it. This picture looks a lot different than what I had seen to start with.
David, could you...
But that's my understanding, standing on my property, is that that ditch has to go up and around the corner quite a ways in order for all those tiles to dump into that ditch.
David, do you want to show us where this ditch is? Because we don't have a permit for the ditch, I don't think. Thank you.
Well, I can show you the certified wetlands determination shows where that existing ditch is according to their records.
Speak into the mic, please.
I can show you where the existing ditch is according to the certified wetlands determination. We can... So the area on the bottom part of the screen is 248th Street. This is right from what they have, the other dash line right there is Silver Creek, which runs, which kind of snakes right through there, and then to the, going to the southeast...
Do you want to use the cursor so we know what you're talking about?
Can you use the pointer?
He's using it over here.
Oh, sorry, use your pen.
Oh, oh.
Right there. And it stops right in that middle area where, I can go back to one of the pictures that I had.
So there's no ditch in that spot right there?
It's...
There's no natural ditch there?
There's no natural drainage way. It's been, as the applicant has said, it's been silted in over the years, and if we So right there, that's showing where the area is that's pretty much been filled in to this point. As you move forward, this is going to the northwest, and then this is the area where it's the end of, where essentially... And then this is the area where it's the end of, where essentially where that tile would outlet. As you can see, there's, it's been filled in so much so that maybe when they did the determination, that they determined that there was something there, but at this point there's nothing to verify unless the proper survey was done, which I'd point out with the ditch cleanout, with 1415 was permitted with that. But this is just showing, this is a picture of the location of that.
So is that the only ditch cleanout that you have? You don't have anything that's going north?
We don't have anything going north. Most, everything, it was everything within this grass area right here. The area that's highlighted right here, this is the area that mainly... Okay, that's a better picture. This area right here is shown on the wetlands determination. As you saw, that was the existing ditch according to their records and what they did upon their field inspection.
They being...
This was included with the ditch cleanout for 1415.
Are you saying the thing coming, the ditch coming up from 248? It stops right about in there and collects is all, so it's just...
Well, there's an area right in there where, this is about the middle. You can see there's a portion of it that...
Pardon me? Is it on your property line?
Yeah.
Okay. Looking into your property or looking away from your property?
Looking away. So right here is right where that middle area would be. There's a little bit of grass there, a little bit of grass that's growing in this area. And then I know I have a better picture. So even right here, you can see where that location is. Okay, right here in the middle, this is where everything kinda collects in terms of, it's more of a bowl shape where the water runs down and then the ditch just stops.
I think, I was still not clear as to whether there was originally a ditch there that we can clean out to that two feet maximum or to where the original ditch was, or if it just never did because it sat in a bowl.
Unless there was the proper surveying done, then that's the only reason, that's the only way that that can be done.
So according to our ordinance, we can't run through that?
The tile, I mean, just going back to the tile, the tile could run through there all the way to the name stream, which...
Now, was that crop land last year? Was that farmed?
Brian, I think Brian Top has a comment, 'cause he, am I wrong, Brian? Could you comment, Brian? Brian used to work with ASCS offices, so...
I mean, it looks like that was one continuous field. Brian Top, 2836 Old Orchard Trail, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I actually did the wetland determination on this property. And there is, there is a ditch, and we have, we have photos of the 62 map, kinda right through this area, right through here, there is a ditch that runs up through there. And I just, I just wanna give you just a quick background. You know, this dam was built in 62, I think it was 60, 58, I'm sorry. And it was designed for flood control, and like Mr. Mortred said, it has silted in significantly. And we have the original as-built plans. And the drawdown pipe is at 1547, and the flood pool is at 1545. So there's two feet of silt plus, because like Mr. Mortred says, it's not even getting to the drawdown pipe. So yes, we agree, there's, there's a lot of silt in there, and it would be beneficial to get that cleaned out. My proposal would be, let's have Mr. Mortred build his pond, and I, 'cause I think that's what he would like, and have Mr. Klein help him pay for that pond, and that would be the outlet for the tile. It would be good for everybody, as far as I can tell. Mr. Mortred would have nice fresh water in his pond. He'd have a little help between Silver Creek Watershed and Mark paying for the structure. And then we wouldn't have to clean a ditch out, and I just, I just think it would be a win-win situation. Technically, according to the county ordinance, we, you know, we're outletting our tile within a mile of a named stream on an intermittent stream that's listed on the county website. So technically, we don't have to have Mr. Mortred's permission to do this project, according to the county ordinance. But that's, that's kind of a side issue. I'm just pointing that out, that, that I feel Mr. Klein is going above and beyond to try work with the situation and make it a win-win, so.
I'd like to say, though, I did go talk to Wayne earlier. The problem is Wayne wants a pond, landscape. I mean, he wants a 12, he's thinking $8,000 to $12,000. So he gets the Water Creek shit out there, I go meet with Wayne, and the Water Creek shit may have agreed, you know, they're gonna do what, originally, you know, I don't need to dig six, seven, eight feet of water or dirt for him. The Water Creek has probably given him plenty of money to go through his property to get that to original specs. I probably would have helped Wayne, but the watershed guys knew that they probably had to pick up the ball, and, you know, it's a little bit of their trouble they're kinda supposed to maintain. Well, he don't want that. He wants a pond with all the dead trees gone and all this and that. Well, I can't afford, he wants me to go 50/50, and all of a sudden I'm spending probably $6,000 for his landscape. Well, I already taken my trees out over there, and I spent $7,000 already, and then he says, "Well, I want my landscape done too." So I think Wayne should take his money, clean his ditch to original specs, 'cause that's kinda what this thing's built. We got all the specs here. There ain't no question how deep, how wide. I mean, it's black and white, you can all look at them. He's, I guess he's, 'cause he went and filed this complaint, which, like the ordinance reads, it should be a no-brainer. I guess he just, you know, everybody would like a nice pond in the back paid by someone else, and I guess that's kinda what it comes down here today. So I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Christian, Benya.
If I may?
Yep.
I got a question for David, just so I'm clear on the record about, now, permit 1406, as you read this permit, which section of our ordinance is this proceeding under? 'Cause I hear about cleanout and I hear about new tile, and so I just wanted to get clarification on that for the record.
And are you talking about the tile projects specifically?
Yeah, 1406, not, not the cleanout, not 1415, but permit 1406. Which section of the ordinance is this under?
Well, it would have to, it would be classified as outletting into Silver Creek or the name stream.
So it's 1.061?
Yeah.
Okay. And that darker blue line on your exhibits that you're giving, that's where, according to the USGS 7.5 minute topographic maps that are referred to in the ordinance, that's all Silver Creek?
Yes. According to their seven and a half minute topographic maps, the USGS publishes Silver, that is part of the Silver Creek or the name stream, which, according to our ordinance, the tile can outlet into that stream.
And then, if I may, one more question. But on 1415 that we're yet to consider, they are gonna ask to clean out what's being designated as a name stream?
Part of it is a natural waterway cleanout, so it is cleanout of Silver Creek.
Okay.
Which is either two feet or less, whichever is less.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify the record as to which section we're proceeding under.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Questions from the commission?
I'm thinking.
I know.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mortred?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Mortred, you wanna come up, please?
So, as Brian Top explained it, you know, you would like to have a nice stock dam slash pond back there, but at the same time, the existing silt makes it so that it's just mud, right?
Correct.
So to get it so that it drains properly, we would have to scoop it out a little bit so that it got back to the original drain, right?
Well, the original basin, as Mark said, he's got the original specs of the dam. It's not a ditch that goes through there, it's a basin.
So if...
It's a dam with basin. And in order to do that, the $2,000 that the Silver Creek Watershed Board has offered to help with the project is not gonna get you in there and clean that out. He just wants to ditch right through it to the outlet and just let it run right to the outlet, basically eliminate any water holding, keeping, building whatsoever.
Well, except that anything below that outlet would still be water, right?
It would, and if it doesn't get cleaned out, it's gonna continue to be dam.
Show where the pond would be.
Pond is right here.
That whole area?
Yep.
What is that, an acre? Two acres?
I suppose, yeah, I mean, the original design of that.
And your property is the blue line, so you're actually south of that area? No?
My property is this white line all the way around.
Oh, all right.
So I completely encompass this.
I don't think that the trees are Mr. Klein's responsibility, 'cause he's already cleaned the trees out on his side of the ditch. So any tree cleanout is definitely not Mr. Klein's responsibility.
They're not, I'm not asking.
Yeah.
I'm already working on it. Now it's a flood mess, so nobody can get in there.
So if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Basically, you would like to have a pond, but you don't wanna have any additional water?
No, I think if, the way it was explained to me, if all this ditching gets done and all this tiling gets done, that I am going to have a constant water flow flowing from those drain tiles into that ditch, which we're talking about two permits here, but they're working in conjunction with each other, into my property. And it's gotta get through my property to the outlet in order to leave my property.
Where would that outlet be if it doesn't get to the assigned outlet? I mean, does it just go around the south end of the dam, or does it just go over the dam?
It just continues, no, it just continues to fill. It'll fill all the way up in here into Mark's draw. It's such a gradual slope that it fills up in there long ways. Now, if you can drain all that out, and this is dug out to be able to actually hold some of that water, once it gets below the outlet, it can hold that water, but without any capability doing that, it just spreads out and it just sits there.
It seems to me like the simple solution is to make sure that the water drains through and goes beyond, as opposed to backing up on your side. And that would be, that would do away with that stagnant standing water that you're complaining about.
But you can't, you can't accomplish that because there, this is a watershed dam that's got an engineered outlet at a certain level, and you cannot change that outlet.
Sure, but if you dug down to that outlet...
The water is not gonna flow through there once the level gets below that outlet, which we could go out there today after this rain to just blow that outlet, and there's stale water.
So is there water coming out of that outlet now?
Maybe today, after yesterday's rain, it might be running out of that outlet.
I have another comment from Brian.
Could I just mention that I...
Yep. You have to come to the mic, 'cause Dick needs to be able to hear through the mic.
I just wanna, I just wanna point out that the watershed dam was built with that intention to have at least two feet of capacity for silt, which it's now 50 whatever years old, and it's silted in. And that's, that was actually how it was designed, to hold 50 years of silt. That's the way the engineers designed it. So we have the outlet, the pipe that Wayne's referring to, and then we have two feet below that, which is the original flood pool. And so that two feet is supposed to be there. You know, I, if we clean it out, there will be some water standing there, but that is kinda the intention of the watershed dam, to have some silt drop out behind it, so.
Wayne, is that all you're asking, is just to have it cleaned out just to the two feet down? You're gonna end up with silt back in there and have water back in there anyway?
What I've asked for from the very beginning is, is this dam, as Mr. Top just stated, was designed to hold just a certain amount of water and have room to silt it, okay? Well, through that 50-year cycle, that has all happened, and it is all silted in, and it no longer has that two-foot capacity. But this dam was also designed and not designed to have all this drain tile and ditching drained into it, okay? When this was designed, it was designed for all this ground upstream, the way it is, and to handle that water at the rate that it comes down to it. Now, if you wanna go through there and tile all this ground, and that's a significantly large draw that runs up through there with all the fingers, excuse me, that run into it, and you wanna run that all into drain tile to drain that entire piece of ground into a ditch, it's all gonna come down in a hurry and constantly, and the dam was never designed to handle that type of water. So I 100% agree, this is what the dam was designed for, okay? But it wasn't designed for you to tile all the upstream land either. That is not what the design was in 1958, okay? Now, with modern drainage techniques, those things have changed. Obviously, we know that all these drainage projects affect where the water flows, and it's gonna affect the capability of this two-feet of storage that's no longer there, you know, to hold that, that water, okay? So what I've proposed since the very beginning, when I was first contacted three years ago, is if we can co-op this and we can dig that out so that I can actually hold some real fresh water that's not this deep full of weeds and stagnant and infested with mosquitoes, you know, I'd be happy, let's go ahead and do that, and then run your ditch into it, and then, you know, when things dry out, 'cause it's gonna come up above the outlet, it does. When it gets real wet, it comes up above the outlet, and then it drains down to the outlet though. That's where it goes, and then it quits draining at that point. So if it would actually hold decent water in that original basin, more than two feet deep, so that it's not rotten stagnant water, we'd be happy with that. And we've never tried to indicate that we want anything more than that. So we wanna dig it out so that it will hold fresh water.
So you want it dug out more than two feet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because all the drains coming down to it is gonna increase what the dam was originally designed to handle.
Okay. Any questions?
At the same time, the dam was not originally designed to be decorative. It was designed to haul back that silt and stuff, it's done its job. And so what's wrong with it doing its job?
Because it's not, it wasn't designed for the additional drainage to it.
You know, when, when you add that drainage, that's the natural flow of that, and certainly it does speed it up a little bit, but it also prevents the high flow that would happen when you would get, say, a five-inch rain.
But the high flow doesn't bother me, 'cause it fills up and it drains down to drain, and it's done. It's what's left after the high flow that I have a problem with. When I looked at that property, when I bought that property, the whole draw upstream you could, you could drive around in, but yet there was three or four feet of water sitting in that dam. That's what I thought I was getting, and all the trees. Well, it's all being eliminated, and even all the trees on my property have died because they've been flooded out since and not, and not drained after it drained down to the, you know, so it's all been destroyed.
They flooded, though, before the tile was put in.
Because it's silted in, I understand that. It wasn't that way.
So it wasn't the tile, though, that killed those trees and filled it in?
I understand that, and I'm not asking for anybody, I'm taking the trees myself. I've already started that, and I can't get in there now, 'cause it's...
Soggy, yeah.
Yeah, maybe soggy, but yes, I understand that. But I wanna get it dug out so that it can hold decent water.
I can see cleaning out the silt. I can't see cleaning out, at least making Mr. Klein pay for additional dirt.
I'm afraid that's how I see it, too.
But that's fine, but he's not willing to pay for anything. He's made that very clear. Now that, now that I spent three years working with the Watershed Board and got them to help with a little bit, now I don't want any, I don't want help. And it's, $2,000 is not gonna clean that thing out.
Sure.
Just here to tell you that it's not gonna happen. Maybe two years ago when it was dry and they could've got a scraper in there and done it, but they're gonna have to track all, excavate it all out of there, and that costs significantly more than when it's dry. It's either that or, hey, let's wait until some year when it happens to be as dry as it was, we'll get a scraper in there.
Let's let Mr. Klein, he's gonna make a comment again, Mr. Klein.
Well, I guess the...
Well, I guess the discussion here is the depths a little bit.
Pardon me, say it again.
It's the depths of the channel.
Yep.
And my permit clearly states, I can't go any deeper, any wider, any more capacity.
Right.
And you just heard him say that he wants to dig deeper. It's the same permit he's going to get that I'm going to get, unless he goes to, wherever he goes to get dam, and I got the structure of that dam. I mean, it was underdug, it's got, it's been a lot of engineering to it. I don't know that, if it really comes down to it, if he can go digging beside this thing any deeper than original specs. As far as my ditch, water does not run uphill to an outlet pipe. So for him to say, I'm going to dig a three-foot ditch, I probably did say a three-foot ditch, because that's what I had pictured in my head, but when we get, you know, get out there and survey this, the pipe is going to be, to go any deeper than that pipe is no good to me at all. It does zero, because my water is not going to run up that. So I'm going to go in, so we get a little bit of grade, so we can dump some water. And if we don't get the grade, them bottom pipes or tile will not go in, because they won't work. I mean, we're not, it's not rocket science. I mean, it's, if they'll drain water, and there's a ditch that'll take it to the pipe at that level, we're good to go. It's all, that's all we're asking for. And the little bit of flood pool, I think according to this map, if I read it right, and I'm not saying, it's only a half acre. That little, little pool here, from the elevation map side, yeah. So, it's not like it's two or three or four acres, and we're just trying to get to the elevation of that pipe, because after that, it does me no good.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
So, Mr. Klein, if the water continues to silt in and continues to fill that up, is that going to back up onto your land? Is that backing up onto your land now?
It probably should have been cleaned fifteen, twenty years ago, but it's, we just kind of decided to take this project on and try fixing some of this ground, and the closer we get down to Wayne's, if the elevation's not there, then tiles will drop off until the elevation's there to work, and then we'll go north and east with that grade we need. So, down like them two yellow dots are towards the very west, whatever, it would be the west side of our property.
Right.
There's a chance they won't even be there. But we'd like to clean that ditch out. Now, it might only be eighteen inches of, when we get up that far, but at least we get that silt out, so we can get a little bit of flow, instead of being just, it might be two, and it might be ten, I don't, we don't know. Like I said, don't do me no gig to dig that three feet, and then get to that pipe and have it stop anyway on Wayne's. I guess if Wayne wants to dig it deeper, I guess that's up to him, but I don't know. I mean, it clearly states what the depth and stuff was.
Madam Chair, a question for you, I guess. Do you think that if we tiled past the dam, that the water would then be relieved from filling it up and silting it in? You know, if...
I don't know if you can, oh, you mean on the other side of the dam?
Yeah, just go to that side of it, and bypass, basically, the dam.
I was going to say, that's somebody else's property, too. I don't know whose property that is on the other side of the dam. Commissioner...
The easement on the dam will not allow...
I was going to say, they're going to let you dig on it anyway, yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, I believe that there is an opportunity for a solution to this, but in the interim, I'm going to make a motion to allow Mr. Klein to put in his tile, with the condition that he does not put in those three dislocated pieces without connecting them to the, to what we're referring to as the blue line.
Madam Chair, are we going to work on the first one, item 11 first, the ditch?
That's what we're looking at, we're looking at, item 11, which is the drainage.
That has nothing to do with drain tile.
Now, I'm getting confused. Item 11 is a ditch.
It's a ditch.
Item 11 is a ditch clean-out.
Is that what your motion is?
So his motion does not get that.
Your, your motion is for 1406, correct?
Okay.
So we're on 1414, which is ditch clean-out, and this is to the original depth, which it was there forever.
Okay, I'll move to approve 1415.
And a motion to approve 1415, which is clean out of the ditch to the original depth. That is second.
A second.
And a motion and a second to clean out the ditches. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Now we can clean out the ditches. Now we're on to 1416, which is the tiling part of it.
1406, yes, that was my mistake, I apologize, but I will make a motion to allow that while supporting the staff on the disconnected pieces of tile that are, that don't show an outlet.
Could you restate that? I have a question on that. I'm not quite sure how that works.
Well...
Can we, David, could you comment on that? Because I think you said that they could connect those if they were, with the ditch clean-out or something, I'm a little confused as to why that is that way.
Well, they would have to connect to the name stream.
Start again.
They would have to connect to the name stream, that's specifically what I stated, but my recommendation as far as 14-06 is that all tile lines must outlet into Silver Creek.
So how are they going to get there? I'm just confused about the little red box.
Well, I think in the interest of everybody in the audience, we need to bring up the 1415.
Now, that one we just did, didn't we, right?
No, we did the ditch clean-out.
Isn't that what that is?
So this is the ditch clean-out. The area highlighted in red is actually...
Is the ditch clean-out, okay.
The area that's a non-existing ditch.
Okay.
So that's been voted on.
To the east of that is what's classified on the certified wetlands determination, which is...
Okay, okay. All right, so Mr. Barth, what, what was your motion on? Because I don't have that other picture, I don't have all those pictures on here, or at least I can't find them. I know mine are different. This one. Okay. Okay, Mr. Barth.
We're looking at 1415 on these pictures here again.
Okay. But we're done with 1415. Now I'm on the right page. So now we're on 1416, sorry, I was on the wrong page.
So David, looking at your discussion there, the dotted blue line, or green lines, what's the status of them?
The dotted green lines are what was transferred over from the certified wetlands determination.
And they cannot be tiled?
Those areas cannot be tiled without the permission of downstream property owners.
Okay, so I'm going to, again, make a motion to approve all but that.
Can you understand that, Cindy? No, I don't understand that. Your motion is to approve all but what, lines?
All but the, David, could you go to the picture showing...
Not proposed.
All but the lines going to the right and down to the arrow.
That was the ditch clean-out.
From, from the yellow arrow.
That's not part of the permit, Cindy says.
There's, there's a very many pictures.
That's not part of the original permit. The red lines are the tile lines, correct, David?
Yes.
And I'm saying that, David, are you favoring putting in the red tiles there, the red lines over the, except for those little gaps?
These ones right here?
Yeah.
Well, my recommendation is that all the tile lines must outlet into Silver Creek.
Right, so those ones don't.
So they can't.
So I'm saying all but those. And that's my motion, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Where were you intending for those to be dumped to?
We believe that we can bring those to the creek for a good outlet. And we want...
Better come back.
We will outlet all the tile into the creek. It might not be quite as deep as we want it to be, but we think we can make that work elevation-wise, so I would support that motion, I think.
I did second that.
But those, those little bit of tiles down there are not on the original application, you guys, so the original application does not include, Kirsten, you want to speak to that?
I'll just speak to that. Those lines, there's no indication on the application that those are going to be directly outletted, correct?
Which lines? Can you...
The three lines that are orphaned on the southeast corner of that lot.
Which lines are excluded?
Those three lines right there, they're not on the application.
Okay, okay.
Well, they're on the application, but an outlet into the stream is not on the application, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you're going to allow them, you need to put that in the motion. So our motion was...
To allow all but that, that was my motion.
To allow all but that with a second, so. Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair, what are your thoughts?
That if they outlet it into the, into the Silver Creek, it'd be okay.
But right now, they don't.
As the application was submitted, that's not on there, the application that was submitted to your office, correct?
They are on the original map, but they do not outlet into the creek.
Right, that's, the outlet is not into the stream on the, on the application, that was noticed in everything.
Can I just make a comment? I think that, since this is a public hearing, and I believe that you have the option to do modifications, and with your, the condition that we've added on there, that all of the tile lines must empty directly into Silver Creek, I think that rectifies or corrects that situation. Would you not agree, or...
I know the application that was noticed didn't have that on it. I mean, we are having a public hearing, but...
I guess I would... David, those dotted green lines, those are in wetland areas, is that correct? You've got to get up to the microphone.
That...
Existing ditch, is what it says.
It's a ditch.
This is the indication of the dotted green lines, which come from the certified wetlands determination, existing ditches that were mentioned by the NRCS.
So as wetlands, are we allowed to modify it?
Well, this area is not classified as a wetland.
Okay, I thought it was, I apologize. While I do have a motion out there, I guess I'm willing to modify that if that's the will of the body.
It has to be drained someplace. So, if you want to modify it, I would second that.
Okay, I'll offer a substitute, or withdraw my motion, Gerald nodded in withdrawing, and make a motion to approve the project to include an outlet for that discussed area that we were referring to. To approve the project with the condition that everything outlets into the creek.
Okay.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the contract with everything has to drain into the creek. Does that cover us, Kirsten?
That's the motion that's in front of you.
Yeah, because the motion is in front of us.
That was not an answer.
That's the motion that you made.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. So we're done.
That one.
So both of them are approved.
Item 13, consider a motion...
Thank you.
...to declare the 4H Sheep and Swine Show Ring building at the WH Line Fairgrounds as surplus for demolition and removal. Scott Wick.
Good morning, Scott Wick, Fair Manager. I think you all have all the information about that building, I was at building the grounds last week, and this building is extremely old, a lot of rotted timber on it, especially the poles that keep it standing, and this would make way for the proposed donated building that's the next agenda item.
Move for approval to...
I have a motion and a second to demolish and remove the 4H Sheep and Swine ring. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I guess you have the next one, too.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Pipestone Holdings, LLC, for donation of a building at the WH Line Fairgrounds. Scott Wick.
Scott, again, with the fairgrounds. Kirsten and I have worked through this, and he has given his approval. Sylvia Walters is here, if you have any questions, she represents the Pipestone Group that is donating the new Pipestone Discovery Barn.
Any questions for Scott? Looks like we have a go from the State's Attorney's Office.
I'd move approval.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He said it was okay contract.
That was easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
I've spoken already.
Yes, comment from Commissioner Barth.
I just want to say that Pipestone Group is really a growing industrial thing in our area, and I commend them for their effort.
Yep, and we thank them for stepping up and giving us another building, which is great. Okay, we'll move on.
Item 15, consider a motion to approve Highway Department project to pave 470th Avenue, La Mesa Avenue, between Sioux Falls city limits and County Highway 140, 1.25 miles. D.J. Boothby.
Morning Commissioners, D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. If you got a chance to read through the memo here, what we're trying to do is, is put down a hard surfacing over what we normally call La Mesa Avenue, just north, on the west side of Sioux Falls, just north of the city limits. It's a 1.25 mile stretch that's been maintained by Wayne Township for quite some time. The big thing to note there is even though Wayne Township was, was maintaining the roadway, it wasn't their jurisdictional roadway to take care of. There were some agreements that had happened decades ago, it sounds like, that we don't have really good record of, in our department or in the meeting minutes of the county commission or anything like that, that, that did a swap of jurisdiction for what we call the loop road over at the fairgrounds. And it's my belief probably that the jurisdiction was probably supposed to change from the county to the township sometime long ago, but that never happened. And so we were doing some jurisdictional map updates the last couple of years, and found out that La Mesa Avenue is in fact Minnehaha County's road, and, and working through with the township this last year or so, it does make sense that the county would actually have jurisdiction of this roadway and improve it to provide for better traffic flow, and especially with the construction of the schools over there. The middle school should be opening this fall, I believe, and then shortly thereafter, they're going to be building an elementary school. Traffic is already over 500 cars per day on that road. And so what we've done is developed a plan with our own crews to be able to pave that road in the interim, from now until when the city of Sioux Falls annexes that, that area of town and improves it into a large, or arterial street. We've devised a plan to pave that road at a cost of about $235,000, which is, it's a big number, but it's a really small dollar amount for that length of roadway, to have it paved, and then that will allow us to maintain it a lot easier than if it were to be a gravel roadway. So, if you have any questions beyond that, I can answer them now.
Christian Kelly.
I would assume it's going to be not very long before the city annexes that whole area.
That's a really hard...
Isn't there a project already proposed out there to the, to the east of that? But, my question, the city will go in and tear it up and build a new street?
Correct, yeah, they'll do a full regrade and utilities and everything.
So why are we spending a quarter million dollars, which may be going away in a year?
My conversations with the city of Sioux Falls is that they're 10 years or more out, probably 10 to 15 years, and, and so...
With a school, with two schools out there?
Yeah, that's what my conversations have been with both their planning department and their engineering division.
Because they want us to build a room. I don't care. Never mind, never mind.
At least we won't be spending a million dollars per mile, we're just doing enough to surface it so that we can actually clean the snow off of it, because we're going to be responsible to keep that snow off of the road for the school year, because it's our jurisdiction.
Exactly.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, D.J., what...
Yes.
So D.J., what kind of, you know, are we talking four inches of asphalt or two inches or...
The road section that we're proposing is a 26-foot wide, four-inch asphalt mat. And the reason that we do four inches, it has structural strength, and then we are able to do it in two different lifts. The first lift being more of a structural asphalt, and then the second with a smoother asphalt for a better ride.
Do you, pardon me, do you have to replace the base then, too?
We don't have to replace the base. We had a geotech engineering and testing company go out and do some cores on that existing roadway to find out what we have for gravel out there. And they have sufficient base. We do need to regrade it a little bit.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Benega.
Well, timing is always an issue, and frankly, the 1.25 miles for $235,000 is something we probably wouldn't want to pay, but, and I'm going to guess that the city's going to annex it before 10 or 15 years. But the safety of the issue when the school opens this fall, you can't put a price tag on that. And if we leave it as a gravel road, we can almost bet there's going to be accidents out there. So I think this is something we have to do until the city does the annex, and maybe we can go back to them and ask for a $235,000 gift.
Commissioner Kelly.
Are you going to put some pretty strong load limits on that thing? Because you're, you're not designing it for any kind of truck traffic, are you?
Well, if you look at some design standards of county highways, a lot of our county highways were initially constructed with three inches of asphalt. And so the base is the main structural component of that roadway and the base that's out there. And we've looked at that and we, we feel that it's a pretty strong base. So we're going to start out without any load limits. There is a lot of traffic out there that, that comes from the gravel pits and, and the different contractors that work in that area. And so we don't want to immediately post it for a load limit. We think that's going to be a pretty heavily truck traffic route with people being able to bypass Ellis.
They're going to tear it up pretty bad then, aren't they?
You know, we're, we're pretty confident right now that it's going to hold up. And, and if it does start to get deteriorating a lot quicker than normal, then, then we'll have to pull some load limits. But right now, we're, we're intending on building a road section that's going to last.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
So it'll be 55 speed limit there then?
Actually, we're looking at probably posting it for 45 miles per hour. We, we're going to be looking at it to do an actual engineering analysis to make sure our site distances are correct, but we don't want it to be a speedway.
Like Weber avenues.
Commissioner Benega.
Is there any school district, any other school properties that are being built on county property, so to speak, 10 years in advance before the city is annexing the property itself? Is this the first time this has happened?
You know what? For the Sioux Falls School District, it probably is. The Brandon School District, they built the school over there off of Six Mile Road. And so this type of situation has come up before where we've had to modify our infrastructure, but this is probably the biggest improvement that we've had to make because of, of a school building a facility.
But the Assam School District, Assam School, elementary school's in a whole lot better shape than this road, I would guess.
Any other comments or questions for D.J. on this?
Make a motion to approve that project. Second.
I have a motion and a second to pave 470th Avenue, La Mesa Avenue. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 16, authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for construction administration for replacement of structure 50-294-070, one and a half miles north, one and a half miles west of Garrettson on 251st Street, in the amount of $40,727.70. Jason Reeves.
Good morning Commissioners, Jason Reeves, project engineer at the Highway Department. About a month ago, we put out bids for this project, ordered it to prime construction. And in the last month, we've been in negotiations with HDR on a construction administration agreement for this project. In the memo, it stated that it should start about mid-July, which is my estimation, and the completion date is later this fall. So we're looking for your approval on the, just over $40,000 for the agreement.
Any questions for Jason?
I move for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with HDR Engineering for construction administration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 17, authorize the chairman to sign change order number one for project MC 121 STR-13 in the amount of $900 for additional detour signage near Eros Status Center. Jason Reeves.
Good morning again. A while ago, we had a meeting with the Eros people themselves, and this was before the construction started. And in this meeting, we discussed the option of putting up some, some signs specifically for Eros, as they weren't totally comfortable with visitors to the site, finding their site with just the standard detour signing that we had. So we made an agreement with them that if they purchased the signs, we would install them through our contract with our contractor so that they'd be installed properly along the roadway. That cost is about nine, was $900, and we're looking for approval on that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Why are we not putting our own signs in? Because I think we bought a sign installer just recently, didn't we?
If we have our contractor do it, it becomes more of their responsibility and maintenance for this project since it's the entire project. So we felt it was the same as having the detour signing that they are also maintaining. So it, it just went along with the project.
Any other questions for Jason on the signs? Commissioner Barth?
Just a comment, I guess, that they do get a lot of international visitors out there, and it's important that they find their way. I was working out there when the president of Mongolia got there. Hopefully he had his GPS, but...
Any other questions for Jason?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve a change order for the project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jason.
Item 18 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Seeing none, is there any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Barth?
First of all, welcome back in.
Welcome back in.
And I just have a question, Ken, on our, our general fund cash balance. Is, is it looking favorable because of the bank franchise that, that came in higher than expected? Is that why it looks good this...
Well, we actually got that pay, payment on bank franchise tax a couple months ago. It would have been reflected in fire balances. And that, the main reason why this one looks so good is that we had two, two main banks who, and their mortgage accounts, who paid property taxes or the escrow accounts, and that we typically would receive those payments from those two companies in May, and that, which would be reflected, you know, at the end of May balances. And they actually paid them in April and then. So we received those payments in April, which has kind of inflated our property tax collections beyond what we would normally see in, in the other year. So that's the reason why.
Thank you.
Any other old business? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and contract negotiation.
It's my motion.
And litigation. And litigation.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.